Okay, I'll say.
Oh, okay. So we have to get somebody to sit in those two places.
Thank you. All right, evening, everybody. Welcome to Town Ledger Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission Meeting of Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, times 7:00 PM. Call the order. Secretary, please call the roll.
Beth Reevee.
Absent.
Dan Peeler.
Present.
Justin DeBrow.
Present.
Lynn Marie Thompson.
Present.
Paul Mogul.
Excuse?
Excuse. Corey Watford.
Here.
Tony Capon. Please excuse. Glenn Grebner.
Absent.
And tonight, we have Juliette Hodge, our new planner.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on up, before we head to public comments, just, uh, you're listening, Mr. Mogul, and then Miss Reevee, I said she'd be here tonight. Uh, anybody like to make a motion with a good point? Mr. Watford is a regular member for the evening.
All right, so move.
Motion by Mr. Peeler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Watford, you're a regular member for the night, all the voting privileges. All right, let's move on to public comments. If anybody in the public here wishes to speak, take, please, step forward, state your name, address, and, uh, take approximately three minutes to speak to anything, uh, wetlands related to you like in town. Here or none, move on to old business. We have application I W C two one dash one three, recent addition of thirty-four Village Drive and sixteen Ruben Drive. The agent, uh, James Bernardino, land surveyor, owner of Anthony Silvestri, Mario Mendez, residential conservation subdivision, creating four building lots with regulated wetlands and uplands. So you see you're ready to present tonight?
Hello. My name is Jim Bernardo, I'm a land surveyor, and also will be tonight is, uh, Tony Silvestri. He's one of the property owners for this subdivision. This is the four lot conservation subdivision under your, uh, under your subdivision regulations as a conservation subdivision, uh, which permits, uh, four lots off of a common driveway, and that's going to come into play on over that in a minute. What we're going to do is, uh, we're going to extend Village Drive. Currently, the cul-de-sac ends here, um, and, uh, this lot thirty-four was part of the Via Verde subdivision, which was created, uh, by Tony Silvestri in two thousand nine. Uh, this is basically the third phase of the project. Phase one was the, uh, Ruben Drive, some lots we cut off of there, Village Drive, some lots we cut off of here, including Tony's property at number thirty-four. Uh, phase two was the extension of Stevens and, uh, Hilltop Avenue. Um, and so this is basically like the third phase of that project. So the cul-de-sac currently ends here. We're going to extend it up about three hundred feet, uh, onto the property, which requires us to, uh, use a small portion of, uh, land that belongs to, uh, Tony's neighbor Mario. He's a, he's a second applicant on the, uh, on the application. Uh, so in order to extend the cul-de-sac, obviously, we have to construct the cul-de-sac. We've met with Steve Maslin and going over some design standards that he's looking for, and, uh, we're going to extend the cul-de-sac into the property. This outline I've got here in yellow is the inland wetlands. They were delineated back, uh, for the phase one project by Mike Schaefer. Um, so the wetlands were delineated back then, um, and what we're going to do is construct the cul-de-sac, which is going to require some filling in the upland review area. There's no actual filling in the wetlands to accommodate that. Then we're going to, we have frontage lots. So in order to delete the, uh, subdivision requirements for frontage, we've created, uh, a series of frontage lots, but instead of crossing wetlands at all these locations, we'd have a crossing here, here, uh, this current crossing here, and another one up in here again, up in this buildable area. What we're going to do is, is an existing driveway, which comes back all the way back to Tony's house back here, uh, and a pipe culvert that was permitted, installed in two thousand nine, and, uh, the wetlands were filled in order to accommodate that. Uh, we're going to widen the driveway, which is about fourteen feet wide now. The, uh, common driveway requirements for the planning, uh, regulations are that has to be eighteen feet. So we're going to have to widen that, uh, driveway, but the pipe that was installed was twenty-foot pipe with flared ends, and there's, there's enough room to widen the driveway without the additional filling or extension of the pipe. So the existing driveway, the existing culvert is going to be the same driveway that's there now, and off of that, we're going to split off and service the remaining lot. So again, here's the extension of the cul-de-sac. This is, this is your wetlands line through here. We have the one driveway crossing here, uh, where it will be widened up to the full length of eighteen feet up to, uh, split here, uh, up to the point where the driveway's no longer shared. So, um, we have driveway splitting off of that after the crossing to access the, uh, the four building lots. There's also one other additional area that we have. We have, we're going to have a lot, uh, back here in the corner. Again, this is Tony's house and his garage. This is going to be another driveway that splits off of that. Um, what did you get, pond? You remember what, two thousand? Twelve?
Six, six years?
Okay. Uh, so, uh, about six years ago, we also got a wetlands permit, uh, through the commission. Uh, there was a wetlands area in here, and, uh, Tony came in and excavated ponds. This is, is actually a pond here. We're going to have another driveway that comes up to access the house here, which we could overlook, uh, this pond that had Tony, Tony had excavated. Again, five or six years ago, I can't remember. But again, that, that activity was permitted, the crossing was permitted. Uh, what we're coming in for today is just area, uh, work within upland review area. There's no additional filling in any wetlands. Uh, there's no activity in any wetlands. Again, we're going to have grading for the, for the cul-de-sac here, right adjacent to the wetlands. We will be widening the driveway for its full length up to where the foot is, and then, obviously, the, the house construction, this house construction and this one would take place in the upland review area, uh, when the time comes to actually build those. Uh, this one as well is within the hundred foot. Uh, there's notations on the plan that any activity, that these lots, you know, this additional activity would have to come back to the commission for additional permits. And I'm sweating, I'm sorry. I keep fogging my glasses.
So, I'm sorry, you, you went a little fast for me. Can you just highlight each lot and where it accesses the road again?
Okay, so we have, uh, thirty-six Village, which is, the frontage is here.
Yes.
And it's, and it's a...
Okay, so that's off the cul-de-sac?
That's the lot.
Okay.
Interior, you referred to it as interior lot, interiors, right?
Interior.
Okay, so it's an interior lot, twenty feet of frontage.
Okay.
So that's, that's number thirty-six. Then we have, uh, number thirty-four, which is Tony's lot here. That's existing thirty-four, and that's going to stay the same.
Okay.
This is the frontage here.
And that's off the cul-de-sac?
That's thirty-four.
Okay.
And then, uh, oh, I didn't mention that this, um, there was a subdivision approved for three lots here, uh, about five years ago, three, three years ago, but the milars weren't recorded, so the, the, uh, the permits had expired. So they, these numbers were assigned back then. So there's a thirty-two, which is over this area here. Again, here's the frontage for thirty-two, and that's, that's this lot here. And then we're also creating a lot back here, which we're calling thirty-four R, where the frontage is here on the cul-de-sac, and it would involve this piece of property here.
And, and where's the access road to the one right before that?
They're all, the driveway, this driveway to thirty-four actually comes in all the way off this cul-de-sac, comes through here, and now we're going to build the road
Yeah.
to accommodate the, the lots. In addition, uh, there's two parcels of open space. There is, um, there's going to be another four acre piece of open space here, which is conveyed, and it'll be adjacent to open space that was part of the phase two Via Verde, which is the section here. And then there's another one acre open space here, which is going to be contiguous with a six acre piece of open space that was part of the phase one open space.
Okay.
So, I never did a total, but, the total property was sixty acres, twenty-something acres probably, open space?
Yes.
Total. So about a third of the property that Tony had acquired is, is going to be dedicated as open space through the three phases of the project.
Were you widening the driveway? Does that include, uh, putting in additional culvert pipes?
No. Like I said, the pipe, the, the driveway, minimum driveway width for a common driveway, uh, is eighteen feet. There's a twenty-foot length of pipe there, and it has flared end sections on each end, which, which extend out another two feet or so. So really, we've got about twenty-four feet in width there. The current driveway is about fourteen feet, so we're going to add two feet to either side. Uh, we're going to use, um, uh, pavement millings, which we, which we had approved, um, from the, um, Public Works Director on the lots we did off of Ruben and, um, you know, compacted pavement millings. It's not going to be, uh, pay, asphalt, uh, and that's required, again, by the common driveway requirements and subdivision regulations for conservation subdivisions.
So are you anticipating that every access to the lot that comes off the cul-de-sac will have to have, um, some sort of culvert or something?
No, they're not. They're all, and that's, and that's what I was going to say, that's what we've avoided. They're all going to come off this one shared driveway.
Okay.
And they're going to branch off of that. So if we go back to, uh, this here, so again, here, here's the shared driveway that comes in.
Yeah.
Not until, after they cross the culvert, there'll be a lot.
Does it go there? Okay.
And again, after you cross the culvert, there'll be another access over here. So we're avoiding crossing the wetlands here. We're avoiding crossing the wetlands up over here.
And so they have frontage, but they don't have at...
They're not going to use it for access, correct, to avoid additional wetlands impact. And, um, and then again, the last one's going to split off, when you get down in here, will split off to the lot up in the back by the pond.
Okay.
And again, we did that to avoid all these individual, individual crossings, and it's allowed by your regulation to maximum four lots. Not your regulations, subdivision regulations.
So you had said this was phase three?
This was phase, the third, yeah, the third phase.
Is there a phase four planned?
I don't think so. I don't think there's anything left. I don't think there's anything left after this.
Okay, so this would be the final phase of...
That's right.
Okay.
We're adding in, uh, Phil, look like you're right up to the wetlands line in the upland review area. Do you have any sediment controls to prevent it from going?
Yeah, there's, there's silt fence there, and I guess I should, I should go over that real quick. We decided the, uh, plan, the road. So this, this, this sheet flow across this property this way, and, and it flows over to this, this wetlands area that we're, that we're, uh, adjacent to. And so we're picking all that up with the road construction. There's one catch basin here that will discharge out, um, and we, we did a, a level spreader here. So basically, this overland flow that comes here is still going to discharge towards the wetlands, and we've got a silt fence in place right along the wetlands edge, uh, to protect it from any erosion going in there. And again, uh, we're sloping with a two-to-one slope, which we worked with, uh, Steve Maslin on that. He's, that's acceptable to him, and it beats your road standards, so that there's no, uh, at one point, we talked about putting a retaining wall in there or something, but we've been able to work it out. We're, we're grade over and have, still have, uh, no fill into the wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
The, the nearest distance from the, um, cul-de-sac to the wetlands is, is how far, and how are you managing that? The nea, so the nearest, you're right there.
Here, um, the actual pavement edge is about twenty-two feet.
Okay.
But that, that's actually on, if you look at the grading, it's actually on grade there, so there's no filling in that area. I had, I designed it so that this would match the existing grade, knowing it was, it was going to be close. Uh, and the reason the cul-de-sac is that far out is because this is another piece of property here, and in order, in order to make, meet the geometry requirements required by your road regulations, I had to push it that far to the, you know, to, towards the wetlands in order to make it work in accordance with the regulations.
Can I, Corey, Kevin?
No, not probably can think of them at the moment.
This meets the requirements of the...
Um, we're in a disagreement about the open space. If, if this is a standalone subdivision, you know, to be reviewed as its own subdivision, then the open space parcel, the minimum size an open space parcel can be is eighty thousand square feet, so.
Okay. But with regard to the distance from the wetlands and where the cul-de-sac is located, that meets the town guidelines?
That's up to you. I mean, that's, you're, it's within the buffer, so it's just a matter of, that work can occur in a buffer, sure. It's just up to you to determine whether or not it's going to negatively impact the wetlands, and if so, what can be done to mitigate it. And I think they've offered through grading and some, um, so erosion control, and fortunately, the pipe was long enough under the driveway. Sharing the driveways was another way to mitigate impact to the wetlands. So I think they've satisfied all that. It's just a dispute on the, uh, size of the open space parcel right now, which might shift how the lots turn out.
Okay. Well, that's not a wetlands issue right now?
No, but I don't, even if that happened, I, I don't think it would impact the...
Three or four lots off the shared driveway.
Right. It's not going to impact the layout of the culvert, and that's, uh, of the, um, cul-de-sac, I assume. So that, that's where your biggest impact would, would be.
Right.
Till you come back to, back to build on the lots.
Right. I mean, that was, Kyle had suggested that as a condition, which it probably would have to anyway, but.
Any more questions?
Did Kyle file a report on this?
Uh, he should have his...
He did.
I saw that.
Any additional, uh, comments from town staff?
No. Kyle, Kyle just left yesterday, so I'm, I'm...
Okay.
Because I don't know who else it would be, but I'm sorry.
All right, so if there's no more questions or comments, concerns, the application, we have two actions we need to do tonight. First, we need to vote whether this is going to be significant or non-significant impact. See, and if it happens to be non-significant impact, what we choose. See if we can vote to approve the application tonight also. There are proposed, or recommended proposals in the staff memo, if you have read through that.
But they're really, they're really options. They're just a motion under one suggestion.
Right, and they're just a just motion, so if we feel that there's...
Yeah, he, he didn't take a, a stance or provide us any evaluative comments.
No.
Please, based on the description of what I'm seeing, I think this is, has non-significant tasking to achieve, given the restrictions, um, the external regulations and the geography of the area.
Were the erosion controls a part of the plan? It's tough for me to see through this distance, sorry.
Yeah, there's, uh, this, that's right, it's just temporary sediment fence. It runs along the level spreader, right along the wetlands edge, it comes, comes up to here with the cul-de-sac, which is, which is back to grade.
Okay, great, thank you.
And actually, I take that back. It does, it actually, I, I, I did, on a revised plan, I did extend it around, because again, we're going to be bringing millings here at that crossing, so I extended it on the downslope side of that pipe culvert to less stabilize.
Is that on the plan, do you have it on file?
I actually sent that in a, you know, a cut sheet to, um, Kyle yesterday.
Okay.
And I, I didn't see it online.
These were received back last month.
What's that?
So these were received last month, what we have on file.
Yeah.
Did you email it to him?
Yeah, I emailed it to him yesterday.
Did you get that? Huh?
No.
Did you CC, Deb?
I did not. That's why I didn't get it put on. Now I know.
The fact that they each, they have approval by the, by the town mayor to... If we go with that, I absolutely want those in place. And it says additional approvals as needed to work in any conditions.
Right, so any kind of...
But what about, um, weapons hand up when we're here?
Considering the fact that the version that we have in front of us is an updated version that you say was emailed to the wetlands officer, um, would you mind illustrating for us on...
Sure.
...copy that we have, what the amendments to the plan were?
So on this, I'm showing the silt fence. So the silt, this is the silt fence line comes around this way, around the wetlands, and I had stopped it here because that's where the cul-de-sac meets the grade. This is, this, this is matching the grade. I just continued it up this way on the downslope side, because we're going to be bringing pavement millings to cover this, uh, that's required by the regulate, the, um, subdivision regulations. So I just extended the silt fence up this far. That's all. I didn't even put it on this side, because, you know, it's, it's going, it's going this way anyway. So I, I just extended it from, from this point up to there.
Do you have a hard copy with you?
I did not bring a hard copy, no.
That should be formally submitted.
Is, is there a copy in that file that you have?
That's what we're looking at right now, but this is, that was received back July eighth.
There's nothing else in the folder?
If you didn't get it off the email, then you didn't get it.
Unless I put...
Wait a second, what is it?
I can't.
I saw this as a, more of a summary document, but apparently that was...
Well, that's the watershed now for the drainage.
Yeah. Um, anything else on here? Doesn't look like it. Okay, so...
All right, so, so we have the hand-marked up copy here on, uh, official, the received document. And so we're going to make a contingent, or a contingency on our approval for the updated hard copy.
Well, we would have to make sure the updated hard copy were, was satisfactory. So what if the applicant initialed that line? Could we, would then that be, that would probably be reasonable, because we're just talking about an extension that...
Yeah, extending, he's extending it.
Yeah, from here up till over there.
Yep.
I'd be satisfied if you initial this, and we just ask for, uh, the hard copy to be reemailed, and you give them the email addresses to send it to.
Well, we have a, we have revisions. We're in the process of making, uh, to accommodate rotten utilities for the water, things that, you know, aren't impacting the wet, with certain details they want to see. So there is a revision coming out prior to our submission to the planning commission, and that will be shown on that, on that application. But again, for extension of a silt fence, I didn't see the reason to run off all new sets for everybody.
If you could just run off one and drop it off.
Well, I'd say, well, when we make our, we're adjusting, after our meeting of the day, and I have not had the opportunity to speak with Steve Maslin, who I understand is away, again, so, um, we'll compile all that and make it with our submissions here, to your commission, if that's okay, with the correct...
They just wanted for a hard copy to complete their file.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can, with your hand drawn and initial modification of this, just include that in our, as a contingency on our approval to provide the hard copy to the file, top file.
Okay. And maybe, um, Mr. Ferrara, can you actually just date, date your signature?
Four, eight, four?
Three.
One moment.
Three.
Three.
Three. It's eight, three, yeah.
Thank you. Then we know that's a ledger. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's no further, a lot of questions, questions, comments, concerns. If you're looking for a motion to classify this as either significant or non-significant impact in accordance with our regulations, you can use the recommended motion that Mr. Felice provided us, if you like, or create your own.
Well, listen.
I, I stopped.
So if the non-significant impact is this motion, I move to forward a favorable report and approve the application.
We have to...
We have to do this one first.
There's two motions here we're going to be making.
Right, okay. So let's look back here, because I don't think I saw, uh, there was, that motion is not here. Okay, so the first motion is, I move that, um, we determine this to be a non-significant impact. It could be a class B, right?
Yes.
The, um, application.
Aye, second one.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, second by Mr. Peeler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Determined to be non-significant impact.
So now, after giving due, is it okay if I do this?
It's absolutely okay.
After giving due consideration to all relevant factors, including those in section six of the Ledger Inland Wetlands Regulations and section twenty-two A dash forty of the Connecticut General Statutes, I move to forward a favorable report to the Ledger Planning and Zoning Commission and approve application I W W C twenty-one dash thirteen presented by James Bernardo as more fully described in the application, supporting documents including the plan entitled Fireside Farm Division, a Conservation Resubdivision, thirty-four Village Drive and sixteen Ruben Drive, Ledger, Connecticut, prepared for Anthony Silvestri, prepared by James Bernardo Land Surveying LLC, dated July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, with the following conditions...
Can I ask that you also, and as amended?
And, okay, and, um, excuse me, prepared by Bernardo Land Surveying LLC, dated July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and as amended on eight dash three dash twenty-one at the meeting, with the following conditions. One, erosion sediment control measures shall be installed prior to the start of work. Two, the director of Public Works and Town Engineer shall approve the final plans prior to the start of work. And number three, the future individual lot development should get additional approvals as needed for work within the wetlands and the upland review area.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson. Second, second by Mr. Watford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All are in favor? Motion passes. Approve the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deb, because we're all supposed to actually sign the copy this time.
Okay, thank you.
So, here we go, mask, right, my gloves.
All right. Moving on to some new business. We have, uh, two new applications received tonight. They are both as of right applications. And then we have a third, uh, not application, however. We'll talk about the applications. I don't know how to, I don't know how to define it, so I'm just not going to. Pending application, future application. All right, first one. I W C two one dash one four, as a right for thirty-five Sawmill Drive in Ledger. It's an as-of-right determination request for timber harvest with placement of two portable bridges. Detailed description of activity is prescribed. Civil cultural treatment is a permitted use as of right, non-regulated activity according to Connecticut State Statutes. This is a selective thinning to remove trees with defect deformity and dieback from upland review areas. Placement of the two portable bridges is required, see vegetation type map, to protect the natural and indigenous character of the water course in accordance with Connecticut B M Ts, U S D A, N R C S guidelines, and Article four point three of the Ledger Inland But, Wetland Water Course Regulations. I have a letter here from Mr. DeBois to Mr. Felice. Says please find a close as of right, non-regulated treatment. The determination request, which I just read, will govern to prescribe civil cultural treatment of the property of Kevin McBride at thirty-five Sawmill Drive in Ledger. Tree removal operation is scheduled to begin, client's property this fall. This is a straightforward operation involving the removal of trees with defect deformity and dieback from upland areas. There are two temporary stream crossings needed on this property in order to gain access to the property's eastern remote sections for forest management purposes. In both locations, the forest products harvester will be required to install a temporary portable bridge in order to protect the natural indigenous character of the water course in accordance with Article four point three, the Inland Wetland Water Course Regulations of the town of Ledger. Please keep in mind that those tree removal works have been approved by the U S D A and R C S through their environmental quality incentives program, E Q I P. The two temporary stream crossings will be installed to U S D A and R C S standards, then removed at the completion of tree removal operation in accordance with best management practices in the state of Connecticut. If you can take this matter up in my absence at the August third Inlet Wetlands meeting, I urge you to do so. If not, will be available to meet with the commission in person at the next regularly scheduled wetlands meeting for September. Please know we know that may be. Another letter from Mr. DeBois to Mr. Felice. And please find closed notification of timber harvest for the property of Kevin McBride located at thirty-five Sawmill Drive, Town Ledger. This is a small civil cultural operation permitted use as of right. Activity requires simple jurisdictional ruling on your part. My client is recipient of a grant from the U S D A and R C S to help him take better care of his woodland land. To that end, we will be conducting a tree removal operation this fall to remove mostly dead and dying oak trees that resulted from recent gypse and moth defoliations. The tree removal work will get underway after November first. It will be completed within a month barring any unforeseen circumstances. All abiding landowners have already been notified by U S mail. There are two temporary system, stream crossings, required in order to reach the remote southern section of the property for forest management purposes. Portable wooden bridges will be installed at both locations, then removed at completion of tree removal operation. Skid trails will then be planted with conservation grass seed mixture in order to prevent runoff and erosion. Kind of let me know if I need to be in attendance at your next Inlet Wetlands meeting, and if so, please specify the date and time. Also, are you meeting as a person via Zoom? And here we do have a notification of timber harvest as, read the paragraph. Looking at thirty-six point seven acres with a thirty-two acre harvest area. Let's see, we have the forest practitioner here. His name is Alex DeBoi, Alex DeBoi Forestry. His objective is to improve the forest health by removing mostly dead and dying oak trees that resulted from recent gypse and moth defoliations. He is a solid regeneration thinning to remove trees with defect deformity, dieback, and disease in order to promote the growth of the healthier... disease in order to promote the growth of the healthier, better quality trees in the forest. So he's looking at fifteen thousand eight hundred seven board feet, seventy-five cords of forest product to be harvested. Say they have all been marked, painted eye level and ground level with blue paint. And it goes on to repeat, watch over what I just read. See here are maps of the property and maps of the area to be harvested. Is anybody here to represent this application? No, is anyone here? No, okay. So this is an as-of-right determination. Mr. Felice is, go on your part of the Town of Ledger. We have no one certified as-of-right determination, so they'll all come to the committee and fill for the notice. Is why we don't always do this.
So we need to, to not classify, but to identify this as a use of right, therefore no, no classification is required.
Correct.
Okay. So help me with the motion. I move that we, that this application.
I W C two-one dash one-four A R.
Two-one dash one-four A R be determined to an, be determined as an as-of-right application, and as such applicant can move forward with the plans he's provided.
That's well. Motion by Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Second by, second by Mr. Peeler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor? Motion passes. Application I W C two-one dash one-four A R is determined to be an as-of-right activity. That's the application we have, I W C two-one dash one-five A R, one-five through Vinegar Hill Road, Gales Ferry, has a bright determination request to replace an existing bridge with a multi-use style bridge of the same dimensions, twenty foot by thirty-six inches, crossing at a stream on the Nathan Lester House Trail. Detailed description here is to replace existing bridge with a multi-use style bridge of the same dimensions, twenty foot by thirty-six inch, crossing a stream at the Nathan Lester House Trail. Our applicant is Mr. Alex Whittle of Sixteen Fawn Drive in Gales Ferry. The property is working is one fifty-three Vinegar Hill Road. Mr. Whittle, would you like to come up and, uh?
I have a, a map from the Ledger G I S with the wetlands shown. The bridge will be, there is a bridge already there crossing the stream, but it is a steep bridge that does not, well, that restricts multi-use capabilities, and pretty much you can only walk across the bridge. Though the new bridge will be lower, allowing bicycles and mountain bikers, as well as hikers, to use the bridge, increasing its multi-use capability. The bridge will be anchored, well, not anchored, but just sitting on rocks as it is already. So there will be no changes to the impact of the surrounding area, so it'll just be a new bridge.
All right, and this is a?
That is the drop of the bridge.
And the bridge is made out of?
It's going to be locally sourced lumber.
Okay.
So it's fine.
All right, assuming that means not treated?
Yeah.
Will it be anchored in any way?
No, it would be sitting on top of the, uh.
And the, um, it's on property of the Nathan Lester House?
Yes.
And you have approval?
Yes, I do have approval. From Mr. Peeler, Jay Peeler.
And he is?
My father, which is why I'm going to be abstaining from this particular vote.
And Mr.?
He, he just represents the Historical Society for any modifications to the, the property.
Okay.
However, there's still already been a decision, and I do feel like, unless absolutely necessary, I should abstain from taking.
I, I would ask, uh, the application is incomplete, the owner is different than the applicant, or the applicant, the owner would be, uh, we let Historical Society, or the Town of Ledger?
Well.
It would be the Historic District, but you would also have to go in front of the Lester House Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so any approval would have to have the, um, the contingency that there be written approval by, say that again, Corey?
So it goes to the Nathan Lester House, um, House Committee.
House Committee?
Yeah, it's, so the Ledger Historic Commission has their own commission.
Uh-huh.
And then they have subdivisions, subcommittees, and then they have a Lester House one, and a Sawmill one, and they have to go in front of the Lester House.
Okay, so it's a Ledger Historical?
District.
District. District Commission, okay. So it's the Nathan Lester House Committee of the Ledger Historical District Commission?
Yes.
Okay, and that's one approval, and what would be the other approval?
That would be the only one.
Just that one?
Yep.
Okay.
Where the other approval?
Yes.
Okay, so does that seem reasonable to you?
Okay, I just thought, uh, Mr. Felice said that as long as it's, because I had it signed off by Jay Peeler, which signed off on the entire project, though Mr. Felice had, well, Mr. Felice had said that that's the only approval I would need.
Okay.
Probably already has that taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
Listen, I, I would like, uh, just before you approve it, if we could fill out the rest of the application, so we have it on the records correctly, and if, uh, you're uncertain of the owner and address, I'm sure Mr. Watford could help you out.
So can, can he do that tonight?
Yeah.
As amendment?
I'm willing to hand this over to him, so he can kind of, the correction on that.
Here's a pen, so you can just write here, right here, if you want to. So the, the owner is the Ledger Historical Commission?
Yes.
Okay, the Ledger, I wrote that down, the Ledger Historical District Commission?
Yes.
Historical District.
District Commission.
Yep.
And then in parentheses below it, put the Nathan Lester House Committee, right here in parentheses below, in parentheses.
I don't think you mentioned, assuming this is your Eagle Scout project?
Yes.
You're in a scout uniform to present this tonight?
Yes, I am, yes, I do.
Those are important things.
I know it is. And then the address.
That's, that's, we, we can leave that blank. Right, 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 see if, see if that'll work.
Well, put N A's there, just.
Okay, so we're gonna have you put N A under address and N A under phone, so we have a complete application. Okay, let's see, take a look.
All right, and, uh, we're not disturbing any regulated areas.
So, so it, there would be no, no disturbance, right? How are you removing the old bridge?
Um, just having the scout pick it up and walk it away.
Okay, so you have help to like?
Yeah, it's the Eagle Project, so I'll have plenty of help.
Okay, and then that's the same with the new one? You would build it offsite?
Yeah, build it offsite and have it brought in by hand.
Okay. Okay.
So we just make sure that those blocks fill out too.
Okay, so total regulated area disturbed, come back over here, to me. Okay, so the regulated area disturbed would be zero, and the, uh, square feet zero. So you're gonna do a zero and a zero. Okay, we'll get this.
All right. This is the official one. I'm sorry, just keep on seeing one.
Oh. I gave you the wrong one.
You gave the wrong one, sorry, fill it out on this one.
Come, come back again. We'll get, okay, zero, zero. Okay.
Thanks. That's complete.
Okay. Now, this would be a, what kind of application?
As-of-right.
As-of-right, because it, why?
It's both under the, on.
What level of quorum do we need for making it as-of-right determination?
We?
Yeah, we have our quorum. What we, we need is just to double check the regs. It's as-of-right because it is a?
It's on the tip of my tongue, I can't think of this exact wording.
I'm scrambling here. It's recreation.
Recreation, recreational use is the wording.
Is that, is that it? Okay. Because it supports the recreational use of what?
It's a walking trail, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have to buy things.
Exactly. Is this, can I, can I?
Yes, do. Okay. Page ten.
I do have some concerns about, due to the fact that my father was the hacking agent for the?
Grazing, farming, gardening.
Order of the property.
You sit down to the driveway maintenance.
Okay, it's just something that I'm concerned about.
Four point three.
I'd, I'd rather not be the reason that this is involved in question.
Including place for years, golf courses, field trials, nature study, bike and horse track.
Okay, so it is a non-regulated use, okay.
I believe the chairman, you can just sign off on it. It's just, I'm not your staff for that, so you have to designate yourself, essentially, and just sign it.
So the motion is, we move to approve the application as, and as-of-right because of the, as a non-regulated activity.
In accordance with section?
In accordance with section four point three. Of our, four point three B of our inland wetland regulations.
Yes.
Okay. Now we need a second, right?
Motion by Ms. Thompson, do you have a second? Second by Mr. Watford, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you abstaining, Mr. Peeler?
Um, I just have a?
You know what, I need to, I need to pull that back and amend, because we need the completion of the document, the approval. The written approval. Right?
All right, restate your motion, please.
Okay, so I move that we, that we approve this application as a use of right with the following contingency, that written permission from the Ledger Historical District, specifically the Nathan Lester House Committee, be obtained, uh, before the start of any activities.
All right, motion amended by Mrs. Thompson. Do you have a second for the amended motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have an extension.
Actually, I just had a quick discussion regarding that, it does not seem that it's going to be an issue, so I shall add an aye.
All are in favor? Motion passes, approved. Application I W C two-one dash one-five, please provide, uh, from written documentation, can you give it to Ms. Thompson over there? The approval from the Nathan Lester property.
Okay.
Does that depend on, in a way concerning?
So, so you're all set, you're all set with the exception, you've got to get that written permission, and you need to take that over to the office. And then as soon as you have that written permission, we've given him approval to get started, right?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so you're good. Thank you very much.
Last item of new business is a preliminary application review for design phase on Shoeville Brook for a fishway, one thousand nine Shoeville Road and Ledger, for an adrumus river herring will be restored to the watershed that enters the Pocatonic Brook through the construction of a steep pass fishway around Shoeville dam. I see a gentleman here to speak to that.
I'm Jim, I'm on the Director of Eastern Connecticut Conservation District.
And I'm Steve Gephardt, I'm a, uh?
There is a tripod over the corner, take a look, see if that will work for you.
And I'm Steve Gephardt, a fisheries biologist.
So a little background, always setting up. In two thousand thirteen, the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District with partners installed ski pass fishway at Halligal Pond, which is on Pocatonic, uh, Brook as well. Two years later, we reached a dam, a straight pond dam, uh, which is at the other end of Halligal Pond, so this is the next, uh, barrier upstream. And once we, uh, if it's approved, uh, build a fishway here, and airway will be able to migrate all the way to any section here. It starts forming again.
Hold it up here.
Yeah.
This just, uh? Oh, yeah.
So you can use those lower, look down a little lower, there's a little bit lower leg down there that might be a little more helpful.
I don't know whether it's stiff enough, but we can still, we can still, uh, look at a site, uh, location off of Shoeville Road, but it's, it's set back, um, the, um, the dam is on the property of Jesse Wilcox, um, it's a site of an old mill, the mill is totally gone, but some mill works still exist, and, um, the property would be accessed to the Wilcox property, but would require a stream crossing to get over. This is a, um, this is fully designed by, um, S L R, that used to be Malone and McBroom, and they have a lot of experience with, um, with designing fishways. And so what we'd like to do today is describe the project to you. You'll see that there's really minimal, uh, activity in the wetlands, because the next, um, I don't know, let's go to a, a few more sheets down, which actually shows the, um, location of the fishway. This is blown up now from what you've seen before. The dam is here. And the fishway is actually located, uh, well up a hill, at least ninety percent of it, in bedrock. It's high and dry in bedrock, but of course, like any fishway, it has to have the entrance in water down below the dam, and it has to have the exit in water up above the dam, but it does not touch the dam itself, which makes it interesting, because in this case, um, the D E E P, um, Dam Safety Unit, has declined to regulate it, because it's not touching the dam. If the, if the Dam Safety Division, um, not division, the program of, of the Land and Water Resource Division, if it was gonna regulate this, local wetlands commissions have no authority, but they've chosen not to, although other aspects of the D E P will be, um, issuing a self-verification, general permit number ten. But what I think we'd like to do is describe this proper, this, uh, project, show you where there will be, uh, temporary impacts, um, to the, um, wetlands, and then ask for input from the commission, you know, we're not submitting an application, th- this is just in the design phase. Construction is not scheduled yet, uh, you know, th- this kind of construction would only be done, um, during the summer, low flow months, so it's not at all clear whether we'd be ready, um, in terms of funding, uh, to pursue this in the summer of twenty-two. It may be more likely in the summer of twenty-three, so we've got plenty of time, we just need to understand from the commission, um, what would be required from the town. The, um, the, the plan calls for coffer dams, um, well, first of all, I, I think we should say that there, there's a, a sheet here somewhere, here, let's go to this sheet here. This sheet shows the construction access, so let's start with construction access. Here's the brook, and here's the dam. There is a steel plate bridge right there, but it's been deemed unsuitable for construction equipment. It just won't bear it. So in order to get the equipment over on this side of the brook, there would be a temporary roadway crossing the brook, again, low summer months, with a, with a, you know, plastic corrugated pipe in there to pass flow. That crossing would not be used much, there'd be a little bit of staging over here, but most, once over, this is a cleared field, and all of the equipment and construction equipment would probably be staged there. And then all the work would be done in this upland area, which is mostly exposed ledge. They'll have to probably use a ho ram to excavate out the bedrock to place the footings for the fishway in there. So that's one impact. The other impact are coffer dams. The plan calls for no drawdown of the impoundment. So it's, I'm sure it's a little hard for you to see, but again, there's the dam. This line right here is a sandbag coffer dam, a very simple, you know, sandbag and polyethylene sheets coffer dam that will cut off this construction area. It will then be pump-dry, and that will be dewatered. The pond will be retained at the same elevation, and this is a very small area of the pond. The dimensions of this dewatered area is approximately twenty by twenty, perhaps a little less than that. And the drawings show a pump discharging into a hay bale dewatering area over here in, in upland area. This is sort of mixed hardwood forest over here. So that's one temporary impact. I will say that when the coffer dam is removed, the exit of the fishway will protrude, protrude into the head pond, you know, maybe six feet. But it's only two, four feet wide, it's four feet wide. And so we consider, and the Corps of Engineers considers that a pretty minor permanent impact. The Corps of Engineers have already declared it as being de minimis. But then when, when that coffer dam is removed, that whole area gets reflooded and it becomes wetland again. Now, the same, similar thing, I should say, happens down at the bottom, where there'll be a coffer dam around where the entrance is. These are normally poured-in-place concrete structures, about six feet long and four feet wide, with an opening in the middle where the water passes. And so they'll be, you know, put the coffer dam around it, you dewater it, you form the concrete, you pour it. And in this case, we plan on bringing the concrete truck in two places. For the exit, we would bring it down and exist, well, you probably know the trolley line that goes through this area. There's an old trolley line right along the stream. It's in excellent condition, it's cleared, will, it's firm enough to accept a cement truck and a pump. And we would pump via hose the concrete across the dam to pour that concrete and perhaps some of the intermediate pools concrete over here. In this case, the concrete truck would come down here into the staging area, it would not cross the stream, and it would pump the concrete across. So those are the two sort of permanent impacts to wetlands, very minor extensions into the, into the stream, and the area will be rewatered. Now, one more permanent impact is that there's going to be a rock berm built across here, which is to guide fish. This, by, this is a very steep and rocky area, and there was no opportunity to put the entrance of the fishway up here. The fishway had to be down here, and although there's falls here that would block some fish passage, there's a risk that fish could come up the stream, overshoot the entrance of the fishway, and come up into this area and not, not be able to pass the dam. By constructing this rock berm, which has been done in many of the fishways in Connecticut, it will act as a guide to guide the fish to the entrance of the fishway. This rock wall is only going to be about this high, it'll only back up water about six inches, and only for a short period back there upstream because this is so steep. And it's not concrete, it's just rocks, we'll probably reuse a lot of the rock that is excavated out of here for that. And so it's going to be about two feet high, and about whatever it takes to be stable, maybe two and a half, three feet wide at the base. And it's, it doesn't stop the fish entirely if they're really motivated because it, it only drops a little bit, but it, it dissuades them. And usually, they're looking for the easier, easiest path. So when they come up here, and of course, the access road will be taken out post-construction, they come up here, they'll find this, and they'll bump along and bump along, and then they'll find the entrance of the fishway, and then they'll go right up. Now, the following pages have a lot of details on the design of the fish ladder itself. Steep pass fishway, they're pre, mostly prefabricated aluminum. We would be happy to talk about that, but I don't think it's, it's really relevant to the business in front of this commission because it's, it's all about internal hydraulics and what it takes to pass fish. This will be diverting about four CFS of water when it's operating, and it'll only be operated between, oh, maybe the late March until mid-June. And then it will be shut, boards will be placed in here, and it'll be dewatered the rest of the time. So a lot of what's in between there and in the bedrock upland is all fairly technical and designed by hydraulic engineers. But again, we'll be happy to talk about it if you wish to have more details. But I did want to focus on the temporary impacts to the wetlands, both with the crossing, the two coffer dams, and then the permanent one of that rock berm. Now, one of the things, so I've been involved in, in my career, I, I used to, I just retired from the DEEP after forty-two years. I've been involved in the construction of over sixty fishways in the state of Connecticut, and some of them are quite extensive with lots of disturbances to the wetlands, and others are de minimis. And most of the time, we don't come, we have not come up in front of inland wetlands commissions because they, they lack the jurisdiction, because the state took that jurisdiction, they, they regulated it. This case is a little gray. One of the wetlands, one of the clauses in the wetland regulations, state regulations, and maybe in your town regulations, I don't know, because this is the first time I've ever come in front of this commission, there is a clause that allows commissions to waive permits if they feel that number one, the impact is de minimis, and number two, for natural resources fishing and wildlife management and other natural resources. If that, if that clause does exist in your regulations, then one of the things we would ask the commission is whether it feels as though this project satisfies those needs and, and you would waive a permit for this project, or whether, no, you feel that this has significant enough impacts that you would like the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District to apply for permits for construction.
So, so I have one or two questions. When you, when you actually construct the fishway, you go down into the bedrock, how, how does that happen so that the spoils or whatever you take up are in a, are in a way that you can use them as opposed to rock dust?
Right. So generally, what would happen is we would bring a medium-sized backhoe over there with a attachment called a ho ram. And a ho ram is one of these big steel, it looks like a battering ram. You see them when public works wants to break up pavement to put in sewers. And it's basically a jackhammer, and they're going to pound on the bedrock and, and crack it and break it up. And then either a second backhoe, or often another backhoe with a bucket or a thumb, that attachment is off to the side, they break up the pavement, they move over, they drop the ho ram, they pick up the, the thumb or, or the bucket, then they pick up all that fractured rock and they stockpile it. And a lot of the stockpiling will be in this upland meadow here, and then we set aside. And because it's almost all bedrock here, there will, won't be a lot of soil that's generated. I would think the soil would be extremely minimal. Then, we've now created a trench in the bedrock at the prescribed slope for the fishway, and we do have a design that shows the profile of this fishway. It, it's going to climb, and you remember, it's going to climb like ten feet, I think, ten, eleven feet, something like that. So it shows the profile. And so then, what will happen is they'll form, they'll form three concrete resting pools in there for the concrete. And then these aluminum prefabricated sections will sit, will be attached to these level concrete pools, bolted in place, and now the fishway is more or less done. But we'll use a lot of that, that crushed stone to backfill, to actually pile it up, to close that trench. The trench will probably be oversized a little bit, the fishway itself, the aluminum sections of the fishway are only two feet wide. The concrete sections are, by the time you get the thickness of the wall are three and a half, four feet wide. But they'll be overexcavated, and then this, this material will be put back in there and mounted up there to sort of seal it up. Even so, I think that there still will be some bedrock generated in chunks that can be reused for that diversion dam. But it's entirely possible that they may have to import some river run stone, you know, like two-foot boulders to place, specifically place, not just dump it in, but using a backhoe or, you know, a thumb, to place those stones in, in that line. And I will say that over the years of building these fishways, we've used between six and eight contractors to do these kind of things. And we've got a small stable of very experienced contractors who are used to working around dams and working in streams, and they're quite good at this, and this has become sort of a specialty item.
Okay. You also talked about having a, the ability to shut off gates, and it's only open for about a month and a half during the year. Who manages that? Who oversees that?
That's a good question. So this fishway, once it's completed, will be on the property of Jesse Wilcox. A little bit of it will be on a neighbor, and we've got written agreements, we've got signed agreements. The Conservation District has worked hard to get all these agreements. It will basically be owned by the Wilcox owner, the track of that land. However, to answer your question, it will be operated by the Connecticut DEEP Fisheries Division. It'll be part of their, they have, you know, it's their scheme to restore the historic run of fish all the way up to Amos Lake. And the, the Connecticut, or I meant to say, the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District built that really nice fishway down in Hallville in Preston, and it's the same operation. They own that fishway, but the Fisheries Division operates that fishway on an annual basis, and actually has a video camera down there to count fish. There's no plans for a video camera here now, at least at this point. But as they open that fishway in the spring and close it in the summer, they will do the same thing here. And then the agreements with the landowners would allow fisheries biologists to visit this probably once a week during the season to make sure it's not clogged with debris and it's operating properly, and frankly, look for fish activity. And during the winter, when it's closed, it won't require much activity other than if we have a big flood or something, that check in on it just to make sure everything's okay.
So what will be the obligation of the landowner?
Really, the obligation of the landowner is to provide access, is to allow this. It, it's, the agreement says, you know, thou shall not deny the, the state fisheries people from coming in to operate.
So, so who, who keeps the leaves and debris out of the trench?
Out of the fishway itself.
Fishway, yeah.
Yeah. It will be the, the DEEP Fisheries Biologist, that's their, that's their role. There will be a trash rack in front of, in the top end to keep large debris items from going in. And keep in mind that this is only a two-foot wide interior fishway, so there's not a lot of water. And what we find is, as far as sticks and leaves, they flush out, they, they come in. Once you open this up, it's a, it's sort of a torrent of water, it moves fairly quickly through there. And so it's sort of self-flushing, as long as a log or, you know, some trash item, you know, an inner tube or something doesn't get jammed in the entrance. And so during those regular visits, that's exactly what they'll be looking for, to make sure that that, the exit of the, the top end is kept clean.
When the coffer dams are put up during construction, what is the, what are we talking about with regards to the depth, pressure, and risk of water infiltrating under the coffer dam?
So I don't think there's much of a risk going underneath, it's going over the top. So these coffer dams, this area, both areas where they're going to be, it's fairly shallow. It's, it's generally about knee deep water. And therefore, the coffer dam is only, is going to be probably about five deep, maybe a little bit higher. Again, remember, this is during low-flow summer months. Actually, the coffer dam at the top will be the tightest because there's soft material there. So they will lay down a sheet of plastic and a line, one line of, of sandbags, and then that, that sheet of plastic will be held upstream temporarily with another sandbag. And then they'll make this pile maybe four sandbags high, and then they'll take that sheet of plastic and pull it over the top of that and put another row on. And because the, the, the bottom, the pond bottom is soft, the weight of that presses down, and there's a pretty tight fit. But there is a pump there, that, a trash pump, so that if there is seepage infiltration, there will be a pump to pump it out and keep it dry. That's, that's mostly in order to keep it dry for construction. Your question may be getting at for high water and, and public safety. And frankly, if the water goes over the coffer dam, the water goes over the coffer dam, and they get, if there's a lot of water coming, the contractor usually takes his equipment out of there. And, and so if the water goes down into the trenches a little bit, they'll, they'll clean it up. But that, because it's so small and, and the spillway, one of the beauties of this, of this plan is the spillway is unaffected. The spillway remains open. So if we do have a rainstorm, a summer rainstorm, the spillway still conveys a lot of flow, most of the flow. It's only if, if the pond comes up three feet, which frankly, for this stream is a lot of water, only then would it go over the coffer dam. The lower one is perhaps a little bit more tenuous because it's, it's always getting the water going over the spillway. And so that's a little deeper, that'll be a little higher, but it's holding back water from going upstream. So if the water goes up, it, you know, nothing downstream is in jeopardy if that broke apart. It would just flood out where the workers are working to form that, that entrance pool.
Do you have any notes in there for any accidental discharge from the concrete hoses? Does there going over the stream as you're putting them in or taking them out?
No, there are no notes for that. Now, there are notes in the construction notes for the stuff on the ends. I, I've never had too much experience, I, I've never had any experience with a hose bursting in the middle and spilling into the stream, but as you know, the concrete is a little messy, so at the two ends, there could be. And as best management practices will be employed so that the cement truck and the pump will be on dry ground, set back from the stream a little bit, and we would hope that any sloppiness around the... around the truck would not go into the stream. And by the way, that old mill race is dry. There's no water in that old mill race. And at the other end, you know, I would think, I also often already mentioned how we would use rock debris to fill in that trenches. If there is some sloppy concrete, you know, piles of concrete, I think we'd break that up and put that in the trench and then bury it with rocks.
I guess my, sorry, just having the hoses cross the stream in order to get to their discharge. Is there any residual, I think, could spill out into the stream?
Yeah, again, I've never seen-
I don't expect equipment failure, but I think it's reasonable then, while you're putting hoses in or taking them out, you might have some residual concrete that could seep into the stream.
Well, it's, you know, using the hoses, maybe as misnomer, a lot of these are pipes, and they're pretty, I, I don't know what to tell you. I've never, I've never witnessed that. And all I can tell you is that if, if concrete falls in the stream, we'll go after it and we'll retrieve it. And we can, we can put that in, not in the construction notes, it wouldn't be in the construction sequence, but it would be in the construction notes that, that any spilled concrete within wetlands, within the boundaries of the wetlands should be retrieved.
Yeah, I think I'd appreciate a note like that.
Okay.
You mentioned, I just looked them through our regulations here real quick. Look at section 4.3A. It actually goes to non-regulated use for following. Operations and uses shall be allowed as non-regulated uses of wetlands and watercourses. For any disturbance, natural and indigenous care for the wetland or watercourse by removal of disposition material. One of them is conservation of fish. It's listed ours. For your information.
Yeah. So, I think, you know, that would be really the judgment of this commission, whether, I mean, this is clearly for the conservation of fish. There's no doubt about the intent. Then, as we've described it, or can continue to provide details, whether you are comfortable with the fact that it's, it really has de minimis impact on the, on the wetlands.
So, I would, I would like to see continued details, just because I think it's very interesting. And, and, and the pieces that we kind of talked to you about, like protecting certain areas and showing us that the spoils were gonna be, how off-site, would probably be a good thing to have, you know, in terms of controls.
So what, at this point, what would be helpful? I mean, we've got an extra set of plans. Should we leave an extra set of plans for you? They are very technical, and you might want question, you know, if, do you want to go over them now? I mean, we're at, we're at your pleasure, whatever you want to do. One possibility, if you wish, we could spread out the plans on the table, and everyone could gather around, and we could walk you through them sheet by sheet. I, I just, I, I know you've got an agenda, you've got other things on your agenda. So I'm, we're really looking for you, what you would like.
Yeah, I think, I think something along those lines would be better for a future date, when you actually have an application in front of us. Like, all the plans that you're going over right now are available to us online. So, that'd give us the opportunity to review them. And-
Did you just establish it was a non-regulated activity?
We did not establish anything.
I mean, you're-
So, that's my question.
That would be an application that we haven't, we have not received and have not made a determination on.
Okay.
So if I'm following your logic, you're saying that in order for you to determine whether this requires, it's regulated, you'd want an application?
You have to submit one, and then they would vote on whether or not it was-
Yeah.
Like they did for that one before.
It's like we did for the Boy Scout there.
Right.
Right. But I say, having all these plans available online, I think, you know, it would be good for us to review them all prior to that discussion, so that we could have more data to give a intelligent discussion.
So I could provide those? I assume you guys all have access to them?
We actually did have 193 pages of things to review tonight. So I think we have yours.
It was, I looked on the agenda, it was there.
Yeah. So we have them, but you help us make sense of them. At least me.
Yeah, we realize that commissions don't deal with fishway applications every day, so this is something a little bit-
So how, how deep ultimately will the fishway be?
Okay, that's, let's just turn to the profile.
Because you have a depth of your water.
Right. So the, yeah, it's probably back that way. So the aluminum prefabricated sections are 29 inches high.
Okay.
And so, that gives you an idea that the fishway itself is basically about two feet deep. But, now we have the span that, and, and you can't rest the fishway on top of the crest of the dam because it needs water. So the top of the fishway is recessed about 14 inches. And that's why a lot of this is gonna be below ground level.
Right.
I'm hoping that maybe you can see this. So this is the profile. And what I'd like to point out here, if you can see it, is this, these are the water levels at the top. The top one is high water, the low one is low water. And this is the pond bottom. So we go back, and then here's the top of the fishway, which is the exit, we can click a fish. And so, this is about, is about, I'm looking at the scale here, this is about four feet. From the bottom of the footing to the top of the wall is four feet.
Okay.
But, the water level is right here. And so, the, and the ground level is here. So you can see, a lot of this concrete structure is gonna be backfilled. There's only going to be six or eight inches of concrete sticking up above the final grade. Then, you have this sloped aluminum section, which is sitting on a one-on-five slope, and it's bolted to these two concrete structures. And then, you have another long concrete structure, and then you have a long aluminum section. These, these aluminum fishways are prefabricated in 10-foot lengths. And so we've got one, two, three, 40 feet of aluminum fishways bolted together, and that connects to that concrete entrance pool down here, that is, that will be poured inside the copper dam. All of it, from, from here to here, is all dry. So, it's just the, the top end, which is set down into the pond, and the bottom end, which is set down a little into the stream, which is in water. And the water level here generally is right around there. Again, what we, what we can't do, if I can talk with my hands for a moment, the, the entrance of the fishway has to be recessed because we don't want water pouring out into the stream, because then the fish can't get up it. So instead, if this is the water level below, we drop that down, so that the fish can swim right in. And they're attracted by, by flows. And so you're gonna have this sort of jet of water shooting out of the fishway. The fish will find that, and they'll follow that jet of water, they'll enter the fishway, and then it's just a matter of, it's only gonna take them about 15 seconds to get up these 40 feet, because there's no resting. They're gonna shoot, get up there, they're gonna get into this concrete pool, and then they're gonna rest for a while, and mill around a while. Then they're gonna shoot up this second aluminum section. And then they're gonna, once they get up here, they're home free. They've gotta go through a long concrete trough, but they're at head pond level, so they don't have to climb anymore. They just have to climb, they just have to swim out. But perhaps answering your question, the elevation at the pond is 108.3. The elevation at the tailwater is 95.2. So, if you do the arithmetic of 108 and 95, that tells you the total gain that the fish have to climb.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna excuse myself, because there's nothing left on the agenda that pertains to me.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, are these, is this fishway operating primarily as open channel or closed channel?
Open channel.
Okay.
It will not be open to the public. Some of our fishways are. Some of them by, by, by arrangement, like the Hallville, the Eastern Conservation District does have tours there and sometimes bring them in. And there's other state-owned fishways that are open to the public, because this is on private land. It, it will be, it will be acknowledged that it exists, and in the annual reports, people will, biologists will be reporting on how it's doing, but the public will not be allowed back there.
That wasn't what I was thinking.
No, I understand. I just ripped, I just ripped over that.
Closed channel flow.
Yeah. It's, again, for CFS, and the, the stream, the engineering report by SLR summarizes the, the stream flows. But generally, between, during the time of operation, this stream has 10 CFS or up to 20 CFS more. So, when this is operating, there will always be water flowing over the spillway. So that's why we're confident in saying, we're not changing the pond elevation, we're not, we're not changing the hydrology of this site at all. We're just taking a fraction of the flow and sending it down a pathway that fish can negotiate.
Isn't that, I forgot what you call it, but the diverter rock wall that you're putting in, that doesn't affect the hydrology at all?
No, because all it does, well, I mean, it, it affects it minimally, in that it will raise the water level behind it by about six inches. But that section of the stream is so steep, like this, that when you put that berm in to block fish, it's, it's only gonna back up above there, because the stream, the stream is so steep. And so, and it's going to be unconcreted, unconsolidated rock, so there'll be water leaking through it and everything, and, you know, sediment will wash through. It's just a little bit of a guidance for the fish, even if, you know, some of them could get over, but we find that's, we've, we've used this very effective in fishways in Old Lime, and in Clinton, and other streams in which we've had to, oh, and particularly Lime, where we've had to build a fishway quite a ways below the dam.
What's the projected lifespan of this?
Yeah. The, because it's almost all high-grade, marine-grade quarter-inch aluminum, or concrete, good-quality concrete. I mean, we've always said that it's beyond 50 years. The fact is, is we haven't been building, you know, we started building these in the late 80s. And to date, we haven't had any of them. We've only had one of them be damaged, and that was the Jordan Brook Fishway in Waterford. That hurricane, what is it? I, I, the hurricane, the hurricane, it's hard to pronounce.
East Angles.
There you go. Topped a pine tree this big, and it landed right on the aluminum fishway and bent it. And so we're in the process of trying to get a grant to replace that. But other than that, the aluminum will last forever practically, and the concrete, you know, 60 or 70 years, I mean-
Well, let me ask the question a bit differently. Given the way our environment works, and ponds fill in, and things degrade, not what is the life of the materials, but how long do you think this fishway will be doing what it needs to do in this world?
I, I believe it'll be doing what it needs to do, as long as there's a dam here. One of the things about this is, yes, yes, all ponds are filling. But ponds cannot fill above the crest of the dam, because the hydraulics will sweep that over. And because, when you open up this fishway, it's like pulling the plug in a, in a sink, and it really sucks the water in there. And it will keep soft material from accumulating right in front of it. So, you know, what we see with the ponds in Connecticut, and when I say ponds, I shouldn't mean impoundments, dams of small streams. They reach, yes, when they were built 100 or so years ago, they were deep. They've now filled in, but most ponds now have reached a certain equilibrium, where, where maybe the upstream part is still filling a little bit. But around the spillway, it's reached this, because of the localized hydraulics, it's reached an equilibrium. So, it's not gonna fill up too much more, because if it fills up too much more, that just gets swept over the dam. So, I, I believe the simple answer to your question is, we, we have no reason to believe that this thing won't be still serving its purpose, you know, 70, 80 years from now. As a fish biologist, I'm more concerned that the fish survive out in the ocean that long. You know, the fish have greater challenges in this world today than getting around this dam if we provide this fishway.
So, if we were gonna summarize, I think one of the things I heard is, this commission would like to see, you think about, and show us, all the things you're going to put in place that will protect the wetlands from the construction that you do. That would be, you know, where are your piles going, where, you know, and-
I think you'll find a lot of that already in the plans that have been filed, when you look at, not just the plans, although some of that is outlined in the sketches, but also in the, you got, you submitted the technical memo.
Yep.
There's a technical memo, and there's-
Three, four sheets with erosion and sediment control.
Right. So a lot of it is specified. Now, the issue of the concrete in the stream, I don't know. That's generally not specified, but we can add that. And then after, you know, reviewing, I think that we're sort of, we're sort of at your pleasure, if, after reviewing it, if there's still some things that you feel are omissions, that we feel can be easily addressed, we'll address them.
But, but the other nice thing is, now we can go back to our, our documents, and they will certainly, to me, make a little bit more sense. So, so I'm gonna go back and re-review, and if they're having, if there's anything, I'll let Justin know.
Yeah, this is great, because I was starting to go through, there's an overwhelming amount of information for us.
Yes, there is.
And by the way, I just have to say that, because I've been doing this a lot, and I've got a loud voice that can go through a mask, I've sort of taken over. But this is Dan's project. Dan in the Eastern Conservation District has, has been shepherding this through. And so certainly, all communicate, all official communications go through him. I'm acting as an advisor here, a talkative advisor. But, and we've got, you know, professional engineers working for Dan. So, you know, we're confident that we can address your concerns.
So, there is no action required?
We have no action today. This is informational for us, so that we can get our input to move forward.
Yep.
Did you have any additional questions for us?
I'll give you more information as we move on.
Okay.
My email just been provided.
So, yeah, I would like to see an update when you're almost ready to start. And, and it may be that we can, you know, prove it as, as right. That's something we need to, but we would like to see your updated-
Sure. We anticipate the final designs will be designed within a few months.
Wow, okay.
And we'll follow up after that.
Okay. And you fund it by?
Long Island South Futures Fund and mitigation funds on the electric vote.
Oh, okay. Okay. So that's manageable.
I'll follow up there.
Good.
Appreciate your time here tonight.
Yes, thank you so much.
It was a good time of course, Jamie, yeah?
These are yours. Thank you for playing with that.
Okay.
But it becomes fully prepared tonight.
That's okay.
All right, so moving along in our agenda. Was there, um, was there an official report for tonight?
No.
Okay. All right. Correspondence, hold on. Big ol' pile, big ol' pile of folders. No correspondence for tonight. Announcements. You all did not see Mr. Felice has resigned his position with the town?
The what?
Mr. Felice, our wetlands official, he's resigned. So he's no longer employed by the town. He's no longer our wetlands official.
No, I didn't see that.
No, I didn't either.
Maybe that was just to me, then.
Effective when?
Monday, on the 2nd. Yesterday. Yesterday was his last day.
Oh, okay. Did he give two weeks' notice?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Okay. Yep, so like I mentioned earlier, it has a write request that he would normally approve. I know she said her name when she came here, but I honestly don't remember.
Juliet.
Sorry?
Juliet.
Yeah, she's the land use department head now. She's not a certified wetlands official, so she can't sign off on them.
Oh, so where's Liz Burdick?
She resigned.
Oh, I never knew that.
I learned that yesterday.
Okay, okay.
Right, so she's our new land use.
So do we know where these people, where did Liz move on to?
Liz moved out to Nevada.
Oh, okay. And what about Kyle? Kyle did what?
He's going on to do his own thing for a little bit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
He's, I think he told me he's 25, no wife, no mortgage, now's the time to take the risk.
Okay, all right.
Good for you. So he'll be missed. I thought Kyle did a great job.
He did.
Here. So I expressed that to him yesterday. I managed to stop by town hall and say goodbye to him.
That's good. Okay.
So just like, how that's going to really affect us right now is like the things that he would normally approve because Juliet's not a certified wetlands official, she can't sign off on it. It's all going to have to come before the commission and we have to approve it.
Okay.
And so Mr. Felice's position is posted, I believe, right?
Yes.
And so in the past, when hiring has occurred, there have been a number of ways that things have been hired. Some, at one point, members of the commission used to do interviews. At another point, it was a combination of members of the commission and town officials. More recently with Kyle, it was he just suddenly showed up and the town had taken care of it. Do we know what the hiring process is going to be?
I'm not sure, but that would be a good question to ask like the mayor or John Steinhaus, HR.
Okay, so.
I can read chat. I have Mr. Steinhaus's email. I can ask that.
And so if we knew like, applications are going to close at such a time, here's how the interviews will proceed and we hope to have somebody on by, that would be really good, especially if they haven't planned that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to those two gentlemen.
Okay.
Provide that input. All right. Are there any other announcements to be made?
No, not for me.
Don't thank you for staying on.
Yes.
You can't lose anybody on this.
That's really nice.
Everyone else can come and go as long as we have you.
Okay. So two minutes to.
Yes, two minutes to approve.
There's a permanent secretary.
So start off with the regular meeting, minutes of June 1st, we did not approve these last month because we didn't have enough members that were present to.
We had technology problems.
And technology.
Yeah.
So you did mention because you weren't present for the meeting, you didn't want to motion on it. So here, I was here, Mr. Peeler was present for the meeting, so was Mr. Wafford. I think you were there for June 1st. Maybe it was just the technology issues.
Because when it came time to vote.
I saw your mouth moving.
I was muted.
I can't read this, I apologize.
She was muted.
All right, so just to move on, a longer meeting than we've had in a long time. If you all had an opportunity to review the minutes, looking for any amendments needing to be made or a motion to approve. These are the meetings of June 1st, minutes of June 1st.
They looked okay to me. So if somebody would like to make the.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
All right, motion by Mr. Peeler. Second by Mr. Wafford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Are there any signatures, a signature block on these? Or has it been so long since we met in person?
That's me. Usually I do, did I put your name on it?
No.
You can just sign it.
Yeah.
Usually I do, yes, put a block on it, a line.
Been so long since we had an in-person meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, and now we have minutes of what?
Minutes of July 13th, our last regular meeting.
I move we approve, I didn't see any changes. Did anybody else see any? Yeah, I'm going to move that we approve the minutes of July the 13th.
Motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Peeler, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Three minutes of a nine-minute meeting. Meeting interview, we did start on time. No issues recording, all materials necessary, we're here. One thing, I saw the Boy Scout there, he didn't, his application wasn't complete.
No.
Some Mr. Felice, he's just rushing through and is trying to get, he had a lot of things taken care of before he left. So yesterday was his last day. He was, he was still going through plans and stuff. I went and saw him at like 1:00.
Oh, wow.
Now, how else am I last day? Well, good for him, I appreciate his efforts. Yeah.
So that's one thing.
We were able to rectify that.
We're going to have to. So who's, are you reviewing everything then that comes through for a meeting? Is it going to be you?
Yeah, well, yeah. I'm not sure what we're doing yet. Yeah, this is all new stuff.
Okay. So we likely have a Zoom meeting unless something complex comes up, right?
Oh, especially since it looks like they want to start tightening up and down on things again.
Yeah, I think we'll make, oh, that's going to change in the next 30 days or may not. So we'll make that determination closer to the meeting.
Yeah, like the week before, so before I post the agenda, we can communicate and.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
I would stop by a few days before the meeting, talk to you guys too.
Okay. All right.
Nothing else, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I need someone to make a motion.
I shall move.
Motion by Mr. Peeler, second by Mr., second by Mr. Wafford. He's very excited to leave. All right. All in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned, time 8:36.
So you just look at Cory, he does this thing. It's like two points.
Thank you, everybody.
Two points.
Two points. I do, I'm like.
Thank you, Daniel.
Because I'm so used to.